Okay. Good evening, everyone. Tonight, November 3rd, at 6 o'clock PM, we will go ahead and open tonight's Select Board meeting. So, in order to do so, we'll start us off with the Pledge of Allegiance. If Brian and Skylar, if you want to come forward and lead us off. So just hit the button until it lights up green, okay? Hit the middle. Light up green? Alright, so kick us off. Go ahead, start.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good job, guys. Alright.
First on our agenda, we have open microphone. First on open microphone, we have Andrew Jennings, 29 Talbot Ave.
Good evening.
Evening.
My name is Andrew Jennings. I live at 29 Talbot Ave. in North Billerica. At the October 6th Select Board meeting, during the public comments, Marlees Henderson stood before you and, in reference to the Talbot Mills Dam removal, urged the Board to mitigate, not litigate. In principle, I agree, but to properly mitigate a historical loss of the magnitude of the Middlesex Canal Summit Pond, you must assess the value of what is being lost. I ask that you consider what landmarks within Billerica have a truly national significance. It's not the Wyman House, where Adams and Hancock took refuge before the shot heard round the world. That is long gone. It's not anything to do with Thomas Stitson's tar and feathering. That all took place in Boston. The Middlesex Canal is one of the few landmarks in Billerica with recognized national significance. It was one of the first four landmarks designated as civil engineering landmarks by the American Society of Civil Engineers. The dam at Talbot Mills was built for the canal, not for the mills. The summit pond contained by the dam made the canal work. While many earlier canals failed, the area of the dam is one of the few remnants of the canal, which is both accessible and visible to the public. Historic mitigation is required for this dam removal project, but while extensive plans for the dam removal have been presented, nothing has yet to be presented about the historical mitigation. I fear that the proposed mitigation will be inadequate, just another mill dam. I fear that the replacement of the summit dam by a free-flowing stream will make it much harder to tell the stories of Billerica's role in applying new technology to shape America's transportation. If we must lose the summit pond, it should be mitigated by a major project to illustrate the loss, something akin to the Middlesex Canal Park that was proposed and on the tip for many years, but eventually dropped because of lack of funding. I would urge the town, its commissions and boards that permit the dam removal, to ensure that the mitigations are worthy of the large historic loss that will be suffered by dam removal is made. Thank you very much.
Thank you. And that's it that we have on the paper sheet for open microphone. Now to Zoom.
Okay.
Next on our agenda, we-
Before we just get started, I just want to acknowledge and take a moment of silence for the retired Deputy Chief, Thomas Ferraro. So before we get into the agenda, I'd like all of us to just take a moment of silence. So, thank you. Also, Daniel, just before we get into this, I just want to kind of reiterate and acknowledge, you know, all of our roles here on the Select Board. I know that we disagree, you know, quite a bit, and completely fine to disagree. We can disagree without being disagreeable. But I think important, especially where our roles here, and especially for moments like this every other Monday, that we're here to make sure that we get through this agenda to be able to meet the business needs of the town. So, you know, important for all of us as a reminder, especially myself as a newbie here, just to remember that, you know, until we are acknowledged and recognized to speak, that we respect that, that we respect all of us, and that goes for all of us new members and those that have been on a while. Just make sure that we all respect each other here. We all have differences of opinions, and that's great, and that there's a reason why we're all here, to represent different voices throughout the town. So just a reminder that for all of us, and to, you know, whether it be signed remarks or, you know, comments towards each other, you know, whether it be personal or about our, you know, political differences here, just let's remind ourselves that we're here to get through the agenda, to be able to meet the needs of the business needs of the town. So with that said, we can go ahead and get into our agenda. So, Daniel, if you could kick us off here, thanks.
Thank you, Chair Pavides. For next on our agenda, we have vacancies on boards and committees for Select Board-appointed committees. First, the Burke Agricultural Commission has one associate member seat open. The Cabot Land Reuse Committee has six total seats open. The Electronic Voting Committee has two seats open. The Fence Viewer has two positions open. The Historic Commission has one member seat and one member alternate seat open. The Historic District Commission has two member alternates' seats open, with one of them being a Senator District resident, and two other alternate seats open, one being a Senator District resident and one being a Mill district resident. For the Local Cultural Council, we have one member seat open. For the Municipal Affordable Housing Trust, we have one member attorney seat open, one member banker seat open, two resident seats, and one member realtor seat for five total. Scholarship Committee, there's four member seats open, and for the 250th Committee, there are two member seats open, with one being appointed tonight. Next on our agenda, we have the Billerica Food Pantry. Sandra Gru from the pantry.
Good evening, and thank you very much. Thank you to the Select Board for this opportunity to speak, but I'm actually here to speak directly to the Billerica residents. We at the pantry are humbled by your generosity, your outpouring of empathy, and your fellowship to your neighbors in need. It's unbelievable, it's speechless, so thank you. While no final resolution on SNAP benefits or the government shutdown has been reached, with your generous help, the pantry stands at the ready to serve all Billerica residents who need our services. Did you realize one in six families in the state of Massachusetts receive SNAP benefits? Look around, how many families are sitting up there? One in six. We thank all who have stepped forward to arrange drives and donations. We'd like to recognize Select Board Member Daniel Darris O'Connor, who reached out immediately to arrange a town-wide drive that's being done on November 8th, 11 to 1 PM, utilizing the pantry's lot. To BATV, who arranged a Friendsgiving event utilizing their community room on November 15th from 2 to 4 PM. More than 50 individuals, civic groups, and companies, small and large, have stepped forward to do the right thing, not the easy thing, even when their bottom line is taking the hit and could use bolstering and support. That's what it means to work together. That's what it means to be a community that cares for each other. If you are in need, please visit our website or give us a call. The only requirement is, you must be a Billerica resident, and that has to be verified twice a year. Again, thank you. We will be at the pantry Saturday morning, November 8th, 11 to 1 PM. If you'd like a tour, stop by, but beware, I will pitch you a work. Thank you again for showing what Billerica stands for. If you have any questions about the pantry, I am more than happy to talk about this, and I can give you strange little trivia facts, or what would you like to know?
Sure. Any questions? Come on.
I just want to appreciate everything you do for the- Sandra's a crazy person, if anyone's ever met Sandra. She does so much for the town. I don't know how she handles it.
It's a team effort. It's a total team effort.
Thank you so much for all you do. But for people in town who may have been affected by the government shutdown, whether they're a federal worker, furloughed, working with LPA, or receiving SNAP benefits that might not otherwise use this resource, could you just explain the process on what, how someone could, a new client could register with the pantry?
Okay. The process is very simple. You call us up, you send us an email and say, "I need help." That's it. We give you a one-page application. The hardest thing on the application is your name, address, and the age of your children. We want to know that so we can give you age-appropriate items. For example, if you have a toddler, we might be able to supply diapers. If you have an infant, we might be able to supply formula. If you don't need those items, we don't want to give them to you. We also want to know your preferences. Do you like peanut butter? Are you allergic to something? We'll make sure that doesn't get in your bag. We have eight distributions throughout the month. Some are in-person, so you can do your own shopping, and others are a drive-through distribution. If you do an in-person shopping distribution, you don't get extra. You actually get less because it's, "I don't need peanut butter this month, so I'm going to skip that." You don't get two of something else. You just don't take extra, and that saves waste, so that's a benefit factor for us as well. Drive-through distribution, it's the benefit of, it's bad weather, you don't have to get out of your car. You've got four kids in the car, you don't have to take them inside. There are pros and cons to each, what works best for you. We have midday in-person, we have evening drive-through, we have morning drive-throughs, we have evening in-person, and we have a Saturday. So we try and stagger the times to make it work for every schedule.
Thank you.
We do require you make a reservation. That way, we know what to order. If you don't make a reservation, we don't know you're coming, and therefore, we don't have food for you.
Okay.
Any other questions?
Thank you, Sandra. As we're rolling into the holiday season, what's a hot item or something that the pantry might be in need of, that resident at home could help out, drop something off?
I would definitely recommend you follow social media. We put out a monthly community ask, and this month, the community ask is for kits and crusts. And what that actually is, it's meal extenders. It's a taco kit, to take scrambled hamburger and make it go further. It's hamburger helper, to make that go further. It's something to extend a meal. It's a rice side dish to put with it. We also have specific asks depending on which group you're working with. For example, the Interfaith Association is doing flour and sugar. The Republican Town Committee just did a sugar drive. The Democratic Town Committee just did cranberry sauce. The Masjid is doing pies for Thanksgiving. So we give out different items to different groups, because not one group can do 450, excuse me, it's now 500. Not one group can handle 500, so we space it out to other groups. But we do have standard needs, cereal. Everybody loves cereal. But with Greater Boston, you can get cereals like shredded wheat, Raisin Bran, cornflakes. Tell me what two-year-old likes shredded wheat. I still don't like shredded wheat. So kid-friendly cereal drives are fantastic. Tuna fish, peanut butter, staples.
Okay.
If you stop by and visit me on Saturday between 11 and 1, you can bring a dozen eggs, because somebody's there for the chain of custody to take that perishable. You can bring a pound of butter. Do you know what a pound of butter costs in the store?
Yeah. Yep.
Do you know what a dozen eggs costs?
Eggs, too, yeah.
Those are gold. So feel free to stop by and visit me on Saturday and bring those with you, and thank you for arranging the drive.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Nice work that you're doing.
Thank you. All other announcements may be viewed on the Town of Burke website. Next on our agenda, we have proclamations and public recognition. Our first proclamation is for the Billerica Community Farmers Market. They were voted number-one farmers market for the fourth year in a row, and I believe we have some members of the farmers market here today to accept this resolution.
Want to come up?
So, to the Burke Community Farmers Market team, congratulations. We are thrilled to extend our congratulations to the entire team at the Billerica Community Farmers Market, for once again being named the number-one farmers markets in Massachusetts for the fourth consecutive year. This incredible achievement is a true reflection of your passion, dedication, and commitment to providing the community with high-quality, locally sourced produce, products. Year after year, you've built more than just a market. You've created a vibrant gathering place where local farms, artisans, and residents come together to celebrate the best of Billerica and the surrounding region. Your continued recognition speaks volumes about the trust, appreciation, and admiration the community has for all what you do. Beyond your success as a market, you've championed sustainable agriculture, supported small businesses, and promoted healthy living, all while strengthening the sense of connection that makes Burke such a special place. Congratulations once again on this outstanding and well-deserved honor. Here's to another success in community spirit, and keep Billerica on the top for the years to come. Sincerely, Chair Pavides, Vice Chair Burrows, Secretary Darris O'Connor, Member Rosa, and Member Dina Favreau. Congratulations.
Good job.
Thanks. Yeah, sure.
Hold on. Perfect. Thank you.
Thank you, everyone. Appreciate it. And thank you all for voting for us.
Our next recognition for tonight is for Randall Andy Brant. Dear Andy, on behalf of the Billerica Select Board, we would like to extend our heartfelt appreciation and gratitude for your exceptional character, honesty, and unwavering commitment to our community, your daily effort to keep our town clean, walking throughout Billerica with gloves and a garbage bag, collecting litter around public sidewalks, municipal buildings, BMHS property, and especially the police and fire facilities have not gone unnoticed. Your pride in our community and your willingness to care for it on your own is an inspiring example of true civic responsibility. Most recently, on Thursday, October 2nd, you demonstrated remarkable integrity when you found a weathered envelope containing nine $100 bills and a withdrawal slip near Town Hall. Rather than overlook it, you immediately brought it to the Burke Police Department. Thanks to your actions, the funds were returned to an elderly North Burke resident who had lost the memory in May and believed it was gone forever. Well, I'm sorry, the money in May, and believed it was gone forever. At a time when she was facing financial hardship, the return of the money was tremendous and unexpected blessing. Your actions reflect the very best of what it means to be a member of our community.
thing back in early October, but you do a wonderful thing all the time.
Please accept our sincere thanks for your dedication to the Town of Billerica and for
I just had somebody in the audience point you out and say, "Hey, that's the guy that's
reminding us all of the value of kindness, integrity, and community spirit.
always cleaning up around town." He's a great guy. And so, we see that in you, and you just proved beyond any shadow of a doubt what
It is an honor to recognize you with gratitude and appreciation. Sincerely, Chair Pavides, Vice Chair Burrows, Secretary Darris O'Connor, Member Rosa, and
type of integrity and character you have by what you did.
Member Favreau.
You made a big impact on a very appreciative woman who lost that money five months prior, and nobody would have known if you had put that right in your pocket and you didn't do that. You brought it right up to the police station, and I'm sure you didn't think to do anything different, but it's nice to see. And as the police chief in this town, I can tell you that it's not something that we always do see, sadly. So thank you for setting an example, and thank you for being the person that you are, and you always have a friend in the Billerica Police and in this community, as you know. I will say, you know, Andy has been doing a lot for the police department for many, many years. Troy Opeland, who's the former Lieutenant Commander, Acting Chief at the police department, is a very good friend of Andy's, and Andy and him have worked to put him in a situation where I think his quality of life has improved, and he's given back to the community, thanks on, in part, to the things that, you know, Troy Opeland has done personally and the police department has supported. So I'm certainly glad that you have that relationship, so thank you for all you've done. Alright? That's for you. He's going to bring it up, and we'll just get a quick picture, if you don't mind.
No.
Oh, come on in. Come on in. Yeah, this is- Lieutenant Opeland, get you in the picture, too.
Yes, absolutely.
Yeah. Let's all stand right over here. That's for you. You can hold that, Andy. That's yours. Maybe we'll get you a blackboard for your wall at home.
Yeah, that'd be great.
What's that?
You can go over here.
Why don't you stand right there, right in front of us, like Rosa. Back up just a pad, and we'll all come in. Yeah, get right up there with him, please. Come on. Sit forward.
And then you go, chief.
Yep. Alright, thank you. Alright, we're all set. Thanks, Andy. Appreciate you coming up.
Thank you, Andy, and thank you, Chief Frost, for bringing this to our attention. Really appreciate it. Have a good night. Okay, our last proclamation for tonight will be presented to- will be presented for the Military Family Month.
Brian, Skylar, the whole family?
Yeah, I'm dying.
Someone gave them candy.
I wonder who.
Just before we say, if you want to just speak into the mic and just introduce yourselves, you're-
So, yeah, hi, I'm Starletz. This is my husband, Matt, and we have Grayson, who is almost three, Skylar, who is 11, and Bryant, who is seven. Military family, we have an Air Force veteran here, and then, almost, I've almost earned the title of veteran. I'll be retiring here in a few months.
Welcome.
Billerica is her home, and we love it.
Yes, we've traveled all over the United States throughout. I've met her in 2008, got married in 2010, so we've been moving every two years. And when we finally found our home in Billerica, we knew that this was where we wanted to be. This is where we want to, this is where we want our kids to grow up. We want them to go to Billerica Public Schools. We want to be part of the community. We love Billerica, and I couldn't have thought of a better place to move to than here.
It's felt very much like home because of the community.
Yes.
And the sports, and all the people involved.
Yeah.
Well, thank you for choosing us. We're happy to have you, so honored to have you.
And thank you both so much for your service, and we understand obviously the immense commitment that military families make throughout our country, so thank you so much for that.
Proud to serve, for sure.
Our proclamation, Military Family Month. Whereas the United States Armed Forces continue to protect the freedoms and values of our nation, and whereas behind every service member stands a military family who supports strength and sacrifice, make their service possible, and whereas military families face unique challenges, including long separations, frequent moves, and the demand of supporting loved ones serving at home and abroad, and whereas the month of November is recognized nationwide as Military Family Month, honoring the resilience, commitment, and service of military families, past and present, and now therefore, we, the Select Board of the Town of Billerica, proudly recognize November 2025 as Military Family Month in the Town of Billerica, and encourages all residents to recognize, honor, and support our military families for their dedication and contribution to our country and community. Signed, Chair Pavides, Vice Chair Burrows, Secretary Darris O'Connor, Member Rosa, and Member Dina Favreau.
Brian, Brian, you look like you had something to say. Brian, do you have something to say? You look like you had something to say. No? Okay.
Usually does. Thanks for putting up-
Can we do a picture, Grayson?
Picture, picture.
Oh, big picture?
Dad, can we hold Grayson?
Can we hold you?
Alright, can mommy hold you?
Hold my brother's face.
Like this. There we go. Smile.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next on our agenda, we have public hearings.
Next item is Continued Public Hearing, National Grid and Verizon Plan Number 311-82460. National Grid to install one JO pole, pole 1450, roughly 250 feet northeast of the center line of the intersection of Boston Road between pole 14 and 15 Sprague Street. The pole will be located on sound property intersected by Boston Road and Colerush Avenue. Make a motion to open the public hearing.
Motion in a second.
It is a continuation.
It's a continuation, okay. Is there a gentleman from National Grid? Brian, are you on?
Yes, I'm on the line.
Okay, go ahead.
So, National Grid is to install one JO pole on Sprague Street, beginning at a point approximately 250 feet northeast of the center line of the intersection of Boston Road. This will be a 50-foot Class H1 midstand pole between poles 14 and pole 15. It'll be designated as pole 14-50 in Billerica. Do you have any questions regarding this pole and its installation?
I think we're- Is there anyone here to speak, Kansas?
I'm chair. I don't think the documentation in our packet is in that order. The first one I have in our packet is for Sprague Street.
That's what we're doing.
Oh, I thought I heard him say Boston Road.
This one's for Sprague Street.
It's Sprague Street, but it's between Boston-
Boston Road, yeah.
Okay, thank you. I misheard him. I apologize.
Yep, I'm wrong. Is there anyone here in the audience or online to speak, Kansas? Any questions? Selectman Rosa?
So if memory serves, we continued this because there was a concern. Has that been resolved?
What concern was there about pole 14-50?
I know that that's the reason why we continued it. Is this the one that was supposed to be in a sidewalk?
There should be no sidewalk on that side.
I believe it's the marking that we had-
Marking, yeah.
Yeah, it was a marking.
It hadn't been marked yet.
Oh, for the abutters, okay. Is there anyone online for this?
No one has to embrace.
Okay. I will just mention that, obviously, the DPW has called out that this is going to be very close to a water line, and you really need to go through the wastewater department as well as the water department to have those lines marked out, because DigSafe doesn't mark them.
Yep, we'll be on it.
Make a motion to close the public hearing.
Second.
Motion in a second, all is in favor?
Aye.
Make a motion to approve National Grid and Verizon Plan Number 311-82460. Next, we have the Continued Public Hearing, National Grid and Verizon Plan Number 311-95999. National Grid to relocate one JO pole, beginning at roughly nine feet westerly from the existing pole number nine, per customer request, at 12 Riden Road. Existing pole is deteriorating and is due to be replaced.
Brian?
Yes, so I understand there was concerns about this pole specifically. I understand this pole is in the middle of someone's new driveway, and my understanding is this pole is also very old and deteriorating.
Okay, go ahead.
Uh, so National Grid is to install one JO pole on Sprague Street beginning at a point approximately 250 feet northeast of the center line of the intersection of Boston Road. This will be a 50-foot Class H1 midstand pole between poles 14 and pole 15. It'll be designated as pole 14-50 in Billerica. Do you have any questions regarding this pole and its installation?
I think we're...
Is there anyone here to speak, Kansas?
I'm chair... I don't think the documentation in our packet is in that order. The first one I have in our packet is for Sprague Street.
That's what we're doing.
Oh, I thought I heard him say Boston Road.
This one's for Sprague Street.
It's Sprague Street, but it's between Boston and...
Boston Road, yeah. Okay, thank you. I misheard him. I apologize.
Yep, I'm wrong. Is there anyone here in the audience or online to speak, Kansas? Any questions? Selectman Rosa?
So, if memory serves, we continued this because there was a concern. Has that been resolved?
Uh, what concern was there about pole 14-50?
I know that that's the reason why we continued it. Is this the one that was supposed to be in a sidewalk?
Uh, there should be no sidewalk on that side.
I believe it's the marking that we had a...
Marking, yeah. It was a marking. It hadn't been marked yet.
Oh, for the abutters, okay. Is there anyone online for this?
Uh, one has to hit raise.
Okay. I will just mention that obviously the DPW has called out that this is going to be very close to a water line and you really need to go through the wastewater department as well as the water department to have those lines marked out because DigSafe doesn't mark them.
Yep, we'll be on it.
Make a motion to close the public hearing.
Second.
Motion in a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Make a motion to approve National Grid and Verizon Plan Number 311-82460.
Second.
Motion in a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Next, we have a continued public hearing, National Grid and Verizon Plan Number 311-95999. National Grid to relocate one JO pole beginning at roughly nine feet westerly from the existing pole number nine per customer request at 12 Reardon Road. Existing pole is deteriorating and is due to be replaced.
Uh, Brian?
Yes, so I understand there was concerns about this pole specifically. I understand this pole is in the middle of someone's new driveway and my understanding is this pole is also very old and deteriorating, so it is up to National Grid to replace this pole to keep public safety as a priority. So, we will want to move the pole approximately nine feet out of the customer's driveway and in a public road. That's why it's, well, public sidewalk, that's why it's petition here. I understand that there were some concerns between neighbors and I'm wondering if there's anyone here today that has any new information they want to add on or any concerns?
There is. If you want to come up first and just introduce yourself and your address and...
My name is Denise Solemy and I'm here in regards to 11 Reardon Road, which is directly across the street. If you back up, with this pole being moved to its new location, if we back out of our driveway, it's going to be hit. I only drive a CRV, but my son is looking now for a new vehicle. If he goes and gets a pickup truck, it's definitely going to hit the pole. And the lake roads are very narrow and once the snow is added to that, I think it's detrimental to the neighborhood for this to be moved. The way it was just worded by the gentleman there, he made it sound like it was being moved for safety purposes. Yes, the pole needs to be replaced. I understand that, but to move it is not creating more safety. It's going to create an unsafe situation backing up out of 11 Reardon Road.
Okay.
If someone wants to move it, there are other places it could be moved. Instead of to that corner, it could be moved to the front of 12, more to the left. The pole has been there for over 30 years. The house was purchased with that pole in its place. If someone had expanded their driveway and incorporated that, that was their choice when they did that, but the driveway was too wide when the house was purchased. And now there's a pole and now there's some paving over this side. I don't think it should be moved to the detriment of the neighborhood or to others.
And Brian, is there any reason? I understood that the pole's deteriorated and we would want to replace it for obvious reasons, but is there any reason why we wouldn't want to put it in the same spot that it is or?
I mean, yes, moving it, keeping it in the same spot would just be putting it in the way of, let's say, plowing or that person and their new extended driveway possibly hitting it on turns. So, it does add that level of risk. We can definitely talk about moving this pole more towards the left side. I think that was the recommendation.
Good. Yep, go ahead.
If you're done, Brian. I've lived in that neighborhood for my whole life. That pole has been there and it hasn't interfered with plowing, as he just stated. If someone, if 12 is requesting it to be moved to expand his driveway, that's an issue. Perhaps it could be moved to the left, still meet their goal, but then not disrupt others in the neighborhood. It shouldn't be to the detriment of others. Thank you.
Yes, that is something... Sorry, may I speak? So, I understand that there was a meeting between the main designer of this plan and the customer located at 12. I'm unsure of what was spoken about at that meeting since the designer did go on vacation. I was wondering if the customer at 12 rear John Road is in this meeting that can speak about it?
Yes, he is.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
All right. Good evening. So, I did bring some photos here to give you guys a better visual of where the telephone pole is currently located, the marking, which is at the end of my driveway on the property line. And this was the suggested location where the paper plate is. That would be directly on the property line. So, as you can see, that telephone pole being there, and just to be clear, I purchased this home in March of 2021, so I've been there for a few years now. The telephone pole has been hit by plows in the past. It's not in great condition at all and it does need to be replaced. Now, more recently, the gentleman Joe from National Grid did speak to me about moving it in the other direction. Initially, that was not an option, which is why he suggested moving it to this side here. I'm fine with it moving to the other end so long as it's moved from this location. So, either it be moved here where this tele, where this paper plate is, or if it does get moved to, I guess, east, to the left. I'm fine with that too, but regardless, it needs to get moved. And if you would like to look at this closer, I can...
I would. I can't see far away, so...
Oh, yeah, if you want to pass these around, but, um, so go ahead, Selectman Rosa.
So, if the owner of 12 is comfortable with it being moved further to the left, I don't know if the gentleman in 14 that was here at the last meeting is here.
Yep, he's here.
I know he had concerns with it being moved to the right where the markings were, so it sounds like the smart thing would be to continue this again, let National Grid figure out whether they want to move it to the left. That'll take care of the people at 11, take care of the people at 14, and that should resolve the problem, I would think.
Yep.
Well, the only other problem, all right, my name's Dave Kelly. I own 14 Reardon Road. The only other problem is this has a light pole on it. This illuminates the street. You move it closer to my house, it's going to light it up like Fenway Park. It already lights up the house across the street. I don't want that. I bought the house. My bedroom faces the front window. I don't want this light.
Your house, if we're facing the houses and we're standing in the road, yours is to the right.
I am to the right, yes.
What we're suggesting is we move it all the way to the left, further away from your house.
I have no problem with that.
That's, that's what we're, so that way it gets it even further away from your house?
No problem with that.
Okay.
I said I didn't have problems with the markings in the first and now he's putting a paper plate on my property hind where he wants to put it. Who's paying to move this pole?
National Grid.
Are you paying to move this pole?
National Grid.
National Grid's paying to move it?
Yeah.
All right, so I don't know why National Grid's going to put a burden on all of us neighbors to do this. I don't want the pole there. I don't want it on my property line. If it goes the other way, I'm all good with you.
That's what we're suggesting. Continuing the meeting, let National Grid go figure out to the left. That takes care of the people at 11, that takes care of you, and he's comfortable with it, so everyone wins.
That's fine by me.
Brian, did you hear all of that? Did you understand that?
Yes, I did. I've taken down some notes here and I'll make sure to get to the designer in charge of this and we'll get that figured out.
Make a motion to continue the public hearing to November 17th.
For a second.
Motion in a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Next on our agenda, we have new business, quick items.
Did we return his photos?
Oh.
One of your photos? Did, like, did you need, need to see those at all? There you go. Okay.
I didn't, I'm sorry. I didn't hear you.
You want to see the photos?
Oh, no, I saw them. Yeah. I was there, I was there in real life.
Yeah, you're all set. Yeah.
Thank you.
Say if you'd like, but...
Next on our...
November 17th, right?
That's right.
Yes, it's continued to November 17th.
But not next Monday, but the Monday after, Dave.
Thank you.
Next on our agenda...
You're welcome.
Have a good night. Next on our agenda, we have new business, quick items. Item number 10, request for 18 by 24 signs on the Common for the Booker Youth Lacrosse for their annual registration from November 4th to December 31, 2025, requested by Vice Chair Burrows.
This is just a duplicate thing. They do it every year. They reached out to get out their early registration. It's usually a big head, four signs on the Common. We just follow the past practice. Mr. Venencio reached out.
Make a motion to approve the request for 18 by 24 signs on the Common for Booker Youth Lacrosse.
Second.
Motion in a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Next on our agenda, we have appointments. Agenda item 11, the 250th Committee. We have one member, regular member applied, Teresa Jo Leary. Given there's no other applicants and we don't need to conduct interviews, I'll make a motion to appoint Teresa Jo Leary to the 250th Committee.
Second.
Motion in a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Moving on to all business. Next on our agenda, we have Agenda Item 12, the Town Manager's Report.
You guys are flying through this.
Trying to beat a record here.
Yes, included in your packets, the Town Manager's Report. Couple of things I wanted to touch base on the website. The website is active. It is running. A few things I wanted to make the board aware of and then also the public is, as with anything, when you go to something new, there is a transition process. And so, at this point in time, a couple of things that I want to make people aware of is that I recognize right now that most meeting minutes and agendas from history, if you go beyond two years, is not currently on the website where staff is, is going to be working on that to get that information updated. Also, as we were going through this transition period, the company that we hired to do the new website, they did kind of a screenshot capture of our old website and worked from that and as we added new material, as in pages, they were updating it on the new website. But what we learned was the existing pages were not necessarily being updated as we were making changes. And so, that's something that we're working on right now. The challenge that I am hopefully conveying right now and we will reach out to boards and committees is the fact that most members of different boards, committees are the experts on their boards and committees. And so, I'm asking that those people that are part of that board and committee to work through potentially one member to capture all of the updates that may be needed. I'm not saying that they definitively are, but if they could kind of review their websites and then send us that information as to what needs to be modified, changed, or added for those webpages, I would appreciate that. Our goal obviously is to be as transparent as possible and to make the new website, which I do believe is easier to navigate, but it better for, easier for residents to find the information they're seeking. It was brought to my attention, there's a couple of other things that are missing on the website, so we're working on getting those things up. So, it is a work in process, progress, but we'll get there. Something else is the LRTA. I recently spoke with Andrew Jennings, who is on the LRTA board, and they're updating their five-year plan to see what the town's needs are for kind of the busing routes and they obviously want to do, provide the most efficient busing routes as they possibly can. And so, at this point in time, I guess I'm seeking both from the board and the public if they believe that we are not necessarily, or their needs are not necessarily being met, that they reach out to us, provide information as suggestions, recommendations, so that we can convey that through Andrew Jennings, so that as they kind of work on their five-year master plan, they might be able to make some adjustments to better reach people in the Town of Billerica. There's also information in here for the Department of Public Works. Obviously, Boston Road is, it's exciting as I travel down that road, as I'm sure anybody else that travels down that, that road. It is paved. They are working on the linings for the road and will continue to do so. So, it's funny, we received very little rain this spring and yet it has all come this fall, which has impacted both the paving and the painting schedules, but that is something that is ongoing. And other things that are in here that I wanted to make note is for Range Way Road, the contractor will continue to work on the pump station this fall. The DPW facility, National Grid Gas, is installing, actually their installation is approximately 50% complete. That project is really kind of coming along. I'm not sure if you guys have been down in that vicinity or area, but it's quite the facility and they're on schedule right now. Yankee Doodle Path Bike Path, we were notified that the town was awarded a 2025 Mass Trails Grant in the amount of $250,000. Our project was one of 112 proposals requesting $16.4 million. So, that's exciting that we're, will be receiving those funds. Moving further down, Economic Development Planning Update. There's a little information in here from Catherine, who is the Economic Development slash Planning Director. She wanted to express her appreciation for all the support for Article 35, which allows more uses to be developable within the industrial districts and that they've already received multiple phone calls regarding interest with some of those changes. As we learn more information, we'll be happy to provide that or forward that along. Also, there was a ribbon cutting last Friday for VMP All Around Fitness, which is located at 199 Boston Road. I know a couple of you were able to make that and appreciate that. And also, the planning staff met with Tech Park Occupant E, Inc. about their desire to bring more manufacturing into the states. They're looking at a $15 million investment, eight million for building and addition, and seven million for new equipment, which would be exciting. Billerica's obviously in kind of line for that. It's not a guarantee that that will happen in Billerica, but we will continue to work on that. And then also, the Chelmsford Forum, something that I wanted to make the board aware of is that the Chelmsford Forum received a water bill that they are disputing and they are going through the process where essentially they challenged it with the superintendent and then the DPW Director. I met with them this last week regarding essentially what they're seeking and what it is to provide information is, they had been receiving, they had one of the older meters and they had been receiving estimated bills and at some point, they ended up receiving an actual, which provided a $67,000, $67,200 bill, in which case we were working with them on that. One of the things that was discussed being that the actual reading was over a seven-year period from the previous actual reading. We're not exactly sure when most of that water usage occurred. And so, one of the things that the Water Department, in an attempt to work with them, looked at was essentially that was at a tier-three rate when they were initially charged that bill because, which kicks it into the highest cost, as if it happened in one billing period. However, it was actually over a seven-year period. And so, we discussed with them lowering it to the tier-one rate, which abated some of money, and yet they're still challenging that bill. And so, at some point in time, that will likely come before this board for discussion as you're the Water Commissioner. So, that's just something I wanted to make you aware of that is kind of ongoing behind the scenes. So, happy to answer any questions you may have.
Selectman Rosa?
Thank you. So, on the website, it's great that it's up and running. I've been told that the Agenda Center is not functioning. Send it out when agendas are posted.
Uh, one thing that, thank you for bringing that up. For the Agenda Center, one thing that they will have to do is all of the lists that people may have subscribed to did not necessarily transfer over to the new website, so they will have to subscribe to the information that they want to receive. So, you can do that through the website. I'm glad you brought that up because that was something that I should have touched base on, which is basically that because it is a new website company and it is a different method in which they kind of send out the notifications, people will have to re-subscribe to those things.
We should probably try to get that out there and let people know because I know a lot of people use that. On the LRTA, it's, it's great for Andrew to get ahead of the curve and get our input. I'd suggest that maybe a COA tries to do, let them get it out to their constituents because a lot of the seniors use the LRTA and maybe ask them what routes they think or maybe added stops or get input from that, that group at the COA. or get input from that, that group at the COA, whether they do some type of a little questionnaire or whatever to figure out what's best and maybe get a consensus there to help them. The Boston Road, you're right, is finally well overdue. All these tip project updates, it was great to get the $250,000 for the Yankee Doodle Bike Path. And the economic development stuff, yeah, Article 35 was great. That's going to pay big dividends for the town, changing all of those allowed uses to add in. And I'm anxious to see how, how much space we can fill just from that one of, one change. The Chelmsford Forum. So I have a little bit of an issue with us reducing the bill to a tier-one. Tier-one is zero to 2,000 cubic feet. And that, the people that meet that are generally people in a one or two-person household, seniors. It's not easy to use only 2,000 cubic feet. Most people are in tier, I'm talking about just residents now, forget about businesses, which the forum is. Most people are in tier-two, which is 2,001 to 10,000. And to say to the forum, we're going to reduce you from tier-three, which is 10,001 and above, to a tier-one, which is almost a two-family household, seems like it's too much of a jump downwards. The meter that they've had, was it tested?
They did test it and they found that it was, I believe, 99.5% accurate.
Okay, so they had a functioning meter that's 99.5% accurate. We know they use the water because it went through the meter, right? We may not know specifically what year. So I certainly understand they may not have been at the highest rate all the time. I don't agree with lowering them to tier-one, which is almost a two-family household. When they're running a business there with, I don't know how much water you have to use to do a skating rink, but they have bathrooms and all of that in there. So I don't agree with that. I don't, I hope that isn't finalized, because I don't agree with it. And I certainly, if they come before us, I would not be looking to waive the other $40,900 as well, because we know they've used water. Now, have they had a, one of the new automated meters installed?
Yes, that on August 12th, I believe, is when that was installed.
August, so, so it's been in for a few months. What is that new meter? Even though the other one was 99.5% accurate, what's the new meter saying that they're using on average?
I know, I don't know the specific number, but I do know that from August 12th, when it was installed, that there was consistent usage 24/7 up until October 29th, which typically would indicate possibly a leak.
Okay, but we don't know?
I don't know the exact.
All right, well, those are, those are things that we'd want to know if it comes before us. Because, you know, who knows, that leak could have been there the whole seven years, too. We know that they had an accurate meter and we know it went through the meter to go into that facility. So are you saying that there's a recommendation to abate them to tier-one? Or is that just kind of what you put out there to them and they weren't happy with it?
So that's what staff had, was attempting to work with them on, being that it was over about a seven-year period. We don't know whether it was a little bit every single month, whether it was, to your point, potentially a leak in the more recent time period that may have caused it. So we don't know exactly whether they would have qualified at the times that the different bills went out, whether, which tier they would have been in, which is why it was, since we can't definitively state that they should have been at tier-two or tier-three at different times. That's why we looked at the lower rate, figuring that was also kind of showing a sign of good faith. But, I mean, this board is the Water Commissioner.
Mr. Dillon, it sounds like we don't necessarily have all the information all together yet. Would you recommend, like, maybe we gather all the information we need and we can add to a future agenda?
Well, it wasn't done, actually. But that's exact, I mean, obviously, we can't vote or do anything on this because it's a Town Manager's Report. But I, I do think once all the information gets put together, we should have it on an agenda to discuss because giving up $67,000 is not something I'm going to be in a big rush to do. And I think, again, I'm willing to work with them, but I think the middle tier is probably a more reasonable place to be. So, thank you.
If I may, I'm not proposing to give up $67,000.
No, no, but they're asking for it.
Yeah, this was just to make the board aware. The next step in the process is they need to submit a letter, which they expressed that they were interested in doing that in this, to your point, Madam Chair, there will be a lot more information and smarter minds than mine here to talk about this when it comes before the board.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you for making aware, making us aware of that. Town website does look good. I know, obviously, it's a little finicky now, but it will come together eventually. Only really other comment, it's good to hear there's some interest with E Inc. and Technology Park. I know that area of town has been up for discussion for years now. It's a large, you know, developed area of this town that's very underused and has great potential. You know, it's really, if you go there noon, at noon time, any weekday, it's going to be, it's basically just a vacant parking lot. And if we look at the property assessments for those properties in those areas, they have lost tens of millions of dollars over the past few years. So I know in the past, Town Meeting did support, a majority of Town Meeting supported a zoning change there at the time it required a two-thirds vote, now it doesn't. So I think this part of town is something we could look into in the future. I know we've had informal discussions, but to more formalize those discussions and kind of like setting a plan in timeline on how to address that. Otherwise, thank you for keeping us up to date on stuff that's going on in town.
Thank you.
Madam Chair? Thank you. Thank you for the Town Manager's Report, I appreciate the updates. I did send an email to you earlier today. The town charter is not listed and we had some changes from 2024. The only thing that is there are the 2016 and the 2017 archives. So we definitely need to get the charter added. I'm someone who relies heavily on the Agenda Center notifications for all the boards and committees that I participate or serve on. And I have not been able to figure out where it is that we need to sign up for that on the website. So if I can't figure it out, I'm sure the public is having some difficulty?
Because it's not ready yet.
Okay, so it's not there, okay.
The only thing that people can subscribe to right now is the news. So when we post the news items, they'll get that notification. We met, we had a meeting last week with them and they are working on that because we made that clear, that that's an important thing that we need to have. Because everybody looks at that. But right at this moment, they are working on it. So residents cannot right now subscribe. As soon as they are, as soon as that function is available, we will be posting it on our social media.
I was scrambling on Saturday when I realized that we had select board today. And I'm like, wait a minute, I didn't get the text message, where's the agenda? So I know that myself and several other, most of Town Meeting relies on it. So it's very, a very important tool. The other thing I wanted to mention is that I'll, I have all of the BSAP historical documents. We send copies to the town clerk and the historical documents person at the library, which is a requirement under the charter. So that should be easily done so long as everybody's been using that practice. However, when I was reviewing the BSAP historical documents that are listed on here and the way that BSAP is referenced on the website, it's listed as the Substance Abuse Prevention Committee. And actually, the word abuse is stigmatizing. We eliminated that and changed the name of the committee several years ago. So that all has to be updated and changed. Still, I have on the website, on the LRT, LRTA Bussing Routes Five-Year Plan, it's my, my personal opinion that I think the town should be doing proactive public outreach through listening sessions and possibly a survey to get feedback from the community. I, I wouldn't expect that people who are using public transit to really know that we're looking for their feedback if we're not advertising it or making it easily accessible for them to come to us and say, hey, you know, maybe we should have a route on this side of town, or maybe this should be changed, or maybe they should be running more frequently than every hour and 10 minutes, et cetera. Because that's basically the stuff that I have heard over the years. And so if we could maybe have one or two public listening sessions, that might be beneficial. I just, I don't know when the deadline is to be able to provide the feedback on the five-year plan. Do we know when that is?
I know that Mr. Jennings was here earlier this evening and he is scheduling a meeting to sit with me and the new Assistant Town Manager in December to discuss, so.
All right, great. It's great news on the $250,000 Mass Trails Grant for Yankee Doodle Bike Path. So did I hear you correctly on the Chelmsford Forum Water Bill issue? Did you say that that was occurring over seven years?
I believe so.
Do we, do we have any idea or indication on why that wasn't caught sooner?
I will say, I can't really speak to that. It was, the one thing I will say that was difficult when we were going through the meeting was that the three of us for the staff that were in this meeting have all been hired within the last three years, so to speak, to something that happened prior to was, was difficult.
I just didn't know if maybe there was a practice or something that needed to be corrected and changed for the future so that this doesn't happen again?
So I will say that there, they now have a new meter. So we are regularly receiving the, apparently the old meters didn't necessarily transmit the way that the new ones do, where it's constant. The other thing, actually, I'll use this if I may, as kind of a public announcement, is that with the new meters, people have the ability to sign up for receiving some Eye On.
Eye On Water.
Exactly, it's an app-type thing where they, they can kind of get this app, Eye On Water, and it will break things down. And they can actually set certain parameters where they receive then notifications if there's like just a weird spike or a leak or something. So with the new technology, it is getting easier and better so that we catch these things, so.
Okay, great, thank you, that's all I have.
Thank you.
Great, thank you. Mr. Burrows?
All right, happy for the website. You know, it'd be good once all the kinks are ironed out. LRTA, I talked to a couple of people to take the bus, they'd like to see one come down 129. Basically, connect Wilmington to Belbrica, you can take the train there. But the odds of hitting the train in that time, so if there's, and you get a lot of the feeder neighborhoods off that. I don't know why this bugs me so much about Boston Road, all those beautiful bricks. But if I, if I paid someone to paint my house and they painted my windows, I'd be having them scrape the paint off the windows. So I got all kinds of grass growing out of these beautiful brick feeders. And I think if the contractor leaves, you know, it's going to be our summer help. You know, the DPW, they'll have someone out there cleaning up their mess. Like, I don't know, I just, I agree, every time, it looks great, you know, it's gotten smaller. The Economic Development Plan, I know Chair Vavitas was working with Planzy for a while on that. She's talked to you and reached out. You know, there's some good stuff coming on there. I know E Inc., they're expanding again, they just did a project a few years ago. So that's, that's good life over there. The Forum, I, I don't know how I could tell a neighbor in town that you're getting a break on a water bill if I can't tell a resident that. You know, we've had, you know, court cases, people over water bills, you know. They owe, they gotta, you know, they should have to pay. Whether it was broken or not, a water meter's broken at a residence house not too long ago and we ended up in court over it. You know, that's them doing their due diligence, pay attention to your bills. You can't just say, I don't know what happened, that's it.
Okay. Yeah.
Next on our agenda, we have vote on 2026 Select Board Meeting Schedule.
All right. Yeah, we're good.
Make a motion to approve the meeting schedule for 2026.
I'll second it, but on the motion, I just have a quick question. I know you had said that you wanted to change one of the dates. Has that been changed on this?
Yes, yep.
Which, which one was it?
It was supposed to be the 26th because we had.
Month?
January.
Okay.
We moved it up because the otherwise, the, the date was a holiday.
I just couldn't, I knew one of them was getting changed, but it wasn't in red or anything and I couldn't remember which one it was, so it's.
Yep, it was January 12th, before, I think originally it was like supposed to be January 26th and I couldn't do that date.
Okay, so now it'll be the 5th and the 12th?
Yes, that's correct.
Thank you.
Yep, so it's a motion and a, was there a second?
Yeah, I said it.
Motion and second, all those in favor?
Aye.
There you go, Don, we voted on the schedule.
Next, we have Agenda Item 14, Update of Select Board Policies and Procedures, Section 20.1. A second reading requested by Member Rosa and first reading, additional changes requested by Secretary Tarris O'Connor.
So this is the second reading for the changing of Line 2 to strike in the Chair of the Select Board. This was under the recommendation of Town Council where we could potentially have an open meeting law violation by having three members of the board having a discussion about the same item under the open meeting law. A culmination of communications can generate as an open meeting law violation. So the simple solution is to strike in Section 2 in the Chair of the Select Board, which was brought before us in the first reading. I'll make a motion that we adopt that change.
Second. Motion and second, all those in favor?
Aye.
And then so for the first reading, I did share with all the members a printout. This was another additional change that we discussed at the last meeting. For the potential, I brought it forward. What this change it would do, it would align us with most municipalities and how they operate with Town Council. Currently, the way, under our current policies, the way Town Council services are requested is that some committees and boards need to have approval with the Town Manager. When our department heads request legal services, it's approved by the Town Manager. But all five individual Select Board members don't have that approval step. Most communities do have it that way. So what this change would do, it would just make it so individual member wants to request Town Council for a legal opinion or whatnot, it would just go through the Town Manager. And that's to prevent any potential misuse, whether that's intentional or unintentional. And it also could save the town some money. If you have multiple members requesting the same legal opinion or an opinion that's already been requested, then it could be used to, you know, save the town money in those regards. But, you know, it has those situations where you could bypass this if it's related to the Town Manager or if there's a vote of the Select Board. So it's not going to hinder the board's operations in any way. So this is the first reading, so we can't really vote on it tonight, but.
Mr. Dillon, do you have a comment or any thoughts on, on this?
The one thing, I mean, I mentioned at the last meeting is that in the previous community that I was manager in, that was, the process typically was most questions to legal counsel went through the Town Manager, unless it was involving the Town Manager, then the Chair would end up. But, I mean, happy to follow any process the board lays out.
Slavon Fabro, did you have a comment?
Yeah, thank you. I would just say that I don't believe this is on the agenda appropriately. It should have been its own independent agenda item and instead it got kind of merged in with the second reading for the policy change from our previous meeting. And then I would say that both the Town Manager and Town Council work for this board. And so I think that the policy that we have in place already covers, includes, including the Town Manager. But I don't, I don't see why would, why we would allow our authority over both the Town Manager and Town Council to be kind of usurped in having to ask permission from the employees when they both work for us.
Can I respond to that? So as individual members, we don't have any sort of like authority individually. So that, we would, you would, but there is, it also does say that this, you could be bypassed by a majority vote of the Select Board. So given some hypothetical situation where some request could be denied, it could always be brought back to the board. But, you know, under the current, current process, there's situations, you know, say like, members require, a member could hypothetically request a legal opinion a week, 52 a year. That could be tens of thousands of dollars a year. And I think if it's ever potentially abused, not saying that it is, or misused, which would be unintentional, this would just prevent that. And I don't, and we also do, are contracted, the Town Manager, this board unanimously voted to approve that offer. So we trust the Town Manager to do the job and they do have a professional viewpoint on this matter.
Chair Burrows?
Madam Chair?
I think he is next.
I just look, I like it, but there's like a little word salad at the bottom there, maybe take it out.
Yeah, we can fix it.
Where it says, "Department Heads With The Approval Of The Town Manager", maybe you have it say, "Department Heads With The Approval Of The Town Manager" or the Assistant Town Manager and eliminate the Chair. No, you keep the Chair, the following of these committees in the absence. But it says then, "In the absence of the Chair, the Vice Chair, and then the Secretary", if we just struck that line where it said, all right, you gotta get permission from me that those committees can reach out with the permission of the Town Manager or the Assistant Town Manager.
Yeah, we can fix that up before, before we throw it on it.
Madam Chair?
Yeah, thank you. Yeah, I-
If I could respond to the comments that were made towards me.
We're gonna go with Slavon Fabro first.
Um, so first off, this policy has been in place for a very long time. And I agree that both the Town Manager and Town Council serve at the pleasure of the Select Board. So by us having to go through the Town Manager to access our employee, Town Council, it's almost like a parent having to ask an older child if he can reprimand a younger child, or, it, it, it doesn't make sense. We really are the ones, we don't make a lot of appointments in town. We don't have a lot of direct reports to us, but these are two of them. And I don't think that we should need to go through Town Council, I mean, through the Town Manager to get to Town Council, who is an employee of the Select Board. Uh, as far as changing the Town Manager and adding in the Assistant Town Manager as an authority part, I don't agree with that either, because the Town Manager, in our current policy, the Town Manager needs to be seated on every single legal opinion that's asked for, unless it has to do with him. So there are checks and balances already in place. As soon as the Town Manager sees a, a request come through, if somebody else has already asked it, or he doesn't think it's appropriate, he has a chance to reach out and intercept that. Um, I don't agree with having to ask the Town Manager for permission to talk to an employee that's employed by the Select Board. So I, I don't support this. Um, I don't think it's a good idea to insert the Assistant Town Manager in, because the Assistant Town Manager does not work for the Select Board. The Town Manager works for the Select Board. And I, I would leave the language that's been in place, in place. Uh, that's how I feel.
That include the language you're changing, because this policy's been around a while?
The policy we just changed was under the advice of Council.
If you're gonna be the Chair of this board and lead this board, shouldn't you know all the legal findings? Or we're just changing the policy now?
So the Town Manager, well, no, under the Town Charter, every le-
Mike, I don't want to go now, and you can't pay the person.
Under the Town Charter, every legal opinion is supposed to be on file in the Town Manager's office, accessible to the public.
Mike, it don't happen. You know that. You haven't asked the legal findings in, what, six years?
Finding?
This is the, the first reading. I, you know, we're not voting on it tonight. This is just first reading, so I think we can move on to the next agenda item. I think everyone, everyone's had an opportunity to speak about the agenda item.
I didn't have an opportunity to respond to the things that were said in response to my comments.
Go on.
Next on our agenda, we have new business. Uh, Item Number 15, Approval to Post Executive Confidential Assistant to the Select Board Job Posting and Create a Subcommittee to Interview Candidates Appointed by the Chair, requested by Chair Pivitas. So, we don't need to take two, two separate motions, one to-
Two separate.
Okay. Make a, make a motion to approve the post, posting of, of job listing for the Executive Confidential Assistant to the Select Board.
Second.
Motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I make a motion to approve a two-member Subcommittee appointed by the Chair, uh, to interview candidates for the, uh, Executive Confidential Assistant to the Select Board Job Posting.
Second.
Motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay.
Our meeting schedule, our next meeting is November 17th, 2025, and followed by that, we have a December 8th, 2025 meeting. Next on our agenda, we have an executive session, um, executive session pursuant to General Law, Chapter 30A, Section 21, Subsection 3, to discuss strategy with respect, uh, to the collective bargaining or litigation if an open meeting may have a detrimental, uh, effect on the bargaining or litigation position of the public body and the Chair, so declares, Kafua Realty Trust, LLC versus Zoning Board of Appeals at all, Notice of Appeal, and then the Talbot Dam, I think.
Who in the voter?
Yeah.
I think, from a posting perspective, the fact that both of them are under 16 gives public notice, but I think from a voting to go into executive session, we need two separate votes, one for each of the items that we're going in for.
Okay.
Okay. And I'll also, I think, make a comment. We had some problems with this, just for practices, when we make the, I guess, the warning to the public, uh, that we can just say that we may or may not come back into open session, just, because we've had problems with that in the past, where we've needed to make an action. Not that we're, not that we're, I'm saying we will or will not, but-
Under the open meeting law, you have to declare whether you are or are not coming back. You can't be ambiguous.
Thank you. Okay. Well, uh, well, I guess we can say-
I guess just, just present-
Complete the agenda.
Yeah.
Okay. Make a motion to enter executive procession pursuant to General Law, Chapter 30A, Section 21, Subsection 3, uh, to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining or litigation if an open meeting, uh, may have a detrimental effect on the bargaining or litigation position of the public body, uh, and the Chair so declares, um, for, uh, Kafua Realty Trust versus ZBA.
Second.
Motion and a second. Slavon Fabro?
Aye. Vice Chair Burrows?
Aye.
Um, Secretary Darius O'Connor?
Aye.
Slavon, um, Rosa?
Aye.
And the Chair's aye.
Okay.
And I make a motion to enter executive session pursuant to General Law, Chapter 30A, Section 21, Subsection 3, to discuss strategy with respect to the collective bargaining or litigation if an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the bargaining or litigation position of the public body, and the Chair so declares, uh, for, uh, the Talbot Dam.
Second.
Motion and a second. Slavon Fabro?
Aye. Vice Chair Burrows?
Aye.
Secretary Darius O'Connor?
Aye.
Uh, Slavon Rosa?
Aye.
And the Chair's aye. Okay. Motion adjourned.